For those of you who may be listening to me on YouTube but have forgotten your Zoom data, the Zoom meeting ID is 915-3923, 9154. And the password is 209840. And if on YouTube you want to join us, go use your browser on your cellphone or your desktop to go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County Ill, short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. Find the session you want to watch, which presumably is tonight's June 10th. Click on it and voila. If you're having any trouble with those, any of those technical things, you can call Ms. Duffy or zoning officers. I'll call it Technical Assistance Hotline, 815-973-3449. All right. I will note that present in the hearing room this evening are all august members of the Lee County Zoning Board, Mr. Messers Forster, Burrow, Bothy, Pratt, Hughes, and Meyer. The petitioner's attorney, Mr. Stryker, is here with, I think, two representatives of his client. The Honorable Dee Duffy is present, as is her highly able assistant, Alice. The Honorable Charles Boons, Charlie Boonstra is present. Of course, court reporter and himself are present. I think that makes up all the people I see in the hearing room. That means we have 14 bodies in the hearing room, well below any Illinois Department of Public Health COVID restrictions that are applicable up until, I suppose, midnight tonight. There are no interested parties in the hearing room. Alice tells me that there is one person on Zoom waiting to testify. There are no interested parties on Zoom. There are no folks in the ancillary rooms that we sometimes have prepared, the rear jury deliberation room and downstairs first lobby, there's no one there. It makes the total courthouse attendance 14 with no interested parties and one person on Zoom ready to testify. All right. I think, memory fails sometimes, but I think the last one we left off, Mr. Stryker, the bow was in your court and you were presenting evidence and you may continue.
That's correct, Judge. Thank you. And we are prepared to continue. I have two witnesses this evening. The first one, Aaron Anderson, is here with us and ready to testify live.
Okay.
In person, excuse me.
Live or in person, yeah. I guess there's a difference.
There is now a difference. That's why.
He's alive. I'll confirm that. From the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, old truth, and nothing but the truth. Have a seat.
Mr. Anderson, if you could please state your name and spell it for the record.
Aaron, A-A-R-O-N, Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
And sir, how are you currently employed?
I am the Director of Renewable Energy at Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company.
Okay. And what is your business address?
9400 Ward, W-A-R-D Parkway, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you. And what is the purpose of your testimony here this evening?
To discuss a shadow flicker study.
With regard to the Big Sky Wind Repowering, is that correct?
Correct.
And have you brought a presentation to present this evening?
Yes, I have.
Sir, I'm going to present you with what I'm going to mark as petitioner's Exhibit 16. You can take a look at that.
Actually, that's okay. I'll remark mine. That's fine, 16.
Sir, are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
Did you personally prepare this presentation?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Then I'll turn it over to you to begin your presentation for the board.
Very well. Thank you. So this evening, we're going to talk about the shadow flicker analysis that was prepared for the Big Sky Wind Farm Facilities. The presentation that I'll give you will walk through the methodology of the study, what shadow flicker is, why we performed the analysis, and ultimately what the results of that analysis were. And forgive me, I can't see it, but are we presenting the presentation?
On Zoom, you mean?
Yeah. Yes, okay.
I think so.
Very good. I'm going to go to the introduction slide. A quick background on myself, again, Aaron Anderson. I've worked in the wind industry for almost 15 years now and currently employed, as I mentioned, as the Director of Renewable Energy at Burns and McDonnell. Burns and McDonnell is headquartered in Kansas City. It's a global engineering, construction, and consulting firm. I lead a team of engineers and consultants that perform studies like this and others on wind farms throughout the country. And I've personally been involved in shadow flicker studies like this in multiple states, including many, many times in Illinois and within Lee County. Next slide, the one labeled Shadow Flicker Overview. So Shadow Flicker is a relatively simple phenomenon with some complex undertones. Shadow flicker happens or occurs when wind turbine blades rotate and pass in front of the sun and they cast a shadow. Quite simple. However, in order for shadow flicker to happen, a few things have to be true. It has to be a sunny day. Without the sun, you will not have shadows. The turbine has to be in operation, meaning it's actually spinning or rotating. Otherwise, it is not shadow flicker, it is just shadow. There cannot be any obstructions between the turbine and whatever it is casting a shadow on. And by obstruction, I mean a home, a silo, a barn, a hedgerow, anything between where the shadow is coming from and what it's being cast upon, because that will obviously cause the shadow to not go through that object. And of course, whatever receptor, normally in this context, we're talking about a home where someone lives, that receptor has to be in the line of sight for a shadow. So if the shadow is casting north and the home is to the south, clearly, we cannot have shadow on the home. As we'll talk about here in a minute, shadow flicker is very predictable. It's most common during very specific times of day and very specific times of year. Those are, in general, early morning and late evening, or during certain fall and spring months. It doesn't mean shadow cannot occur in other times of the year, but just with sort of the natural geometry of how the sun rises and sets and the seasons that we experience, it's, again, most prevalent at those typical times of year. Next slide. Let's talk about the ordinance requirements. At a federal level, shadow flicker, the things that we're talking about here, is not regulated. Similarly, at a state level, shadow flicker is not regulated by the state of Illinois, which is very common in the overwhelming majority of states that we go into. Shadow flicker is not regulated at a state level. At a local level, so this project is located within both Bureau and Lee County, there is no specified limit on the amount of shadow flicker that can occur. And again, that's quite typical. When we do see a limit in place substantially more often than not, that limit is 30 hours per year of cumulative flicker that occurs at a residence. So if you add up a few minutes here and a few minutes there, and you add that up over the course of the year, 30 hours is almost always the limit we see. So even though there is not a specified limit in Lee County, we have used 30 hours per year as what we've characterized as a typical industry benchmark of what we're measuring against ourselves against. And you'll hear me mention that 30-hour-per-year number a few times. Next slide. When we model shadow flicker, we use a program called Wind Pro. Wind Pro is very much the industry standard for these types of studies. It looks just like what you can see on the screen and involves a number of inputs that I'm going to run you through. But at a fundamental level, what happens is that the program models the path of the sun every single minute of every single year, and it determines where a shadow is being cast and if there's a receptor in that line of sight. And it aggregates each one of those minutes at each individual receptor or home, occupied residence. And that's how we end up with the total hours per year that we're talking about. Next slide. When we do the modeling, there are a number of different parameters and inputs that go into it, and I'd like to run you through just a few of these that, in our view, is a very conservative approach to how much flicker would actually accumulate. The overwhelming majority of the time, the conservatism built here is far higher, meaning the results are far higher than what's actually seen in practice. So in terms of things that go into the model, of course, we have to model where the turbines are at. So we have modeled the same wind turbine layout consisting of 110 turbines as any of the other studies that you have heard about. So that's 109 of the Vestas V120 and one of the Vestas V110, with the understanding that one of those turbines would eventually not be constructed to be determined later date. The result of that would be, by removing a turbine, results can only improve. It's possible they could stay the same. So if a turbine was selected that isn't casting any shadows on any homes, at worst, removing a turbine causes them to stay the same. At best, it causes the results to go down, i.e., improve. So again, conservatism is built into this. In addition to turbines, we model all of the receptors, all of the homes. There are 273 of them throughout the project boundary that we've modeled on the map. And we model every one of those in what is called greenhouse mode, which is just a modeling term to say every house is modeled as having windows on every single side. So whereas your house, much like mine, probably has a window here and then a wall and then a window on some other side, every single home in this model has windows on its entire perimeter, meaning it's susceptible to shadow flicker in every single direction. Again, to take a conservative approach to how much should actually be anticipated. Next slide, please. When we model the turbines, we consider, of course, the dimensions of every machine. So we model the hub height or the height to the center of where the blades are at. For both of the models, we're considering it's 84 and a half meters. And we model the rotor diameter, or how far it is from blade tip to blade tip. That's 120 meters for the bigger machine, 110 meters for the one, the singular V110 machine. We mimic how the turbines operate. So we take wind data from the site and we tell the model to actually operate the machines. You'll remember, one of the very first things that I mentioned was that shadow flicker cannot occur if the turbine is not operating. So we model the turbines in operation, usually using actual onsite data. Next slide, please. We also could, we would have the option to consider obstacles in the model. Obstacles, again, would be things like a hedgerow, a barn, a silo, any number of things between the turbine and the home that could block a shadow from getting from point A to point B. We have considered none in this analysis, meaning if a home that is experiencing shadow flicker in our results is actually surrounded by trees or a hedgerow or anything else tall enough to block a shadow, the results would actually be lower at that home, because the shadow would not be allowed to make it that far. And we consider the terrain at the site. So of course, wind farms, sometimes you have high spots, low spots, et cetera. We model exactly the height that every turbine is going to be, above sea level, so where the actual ground sits and where the receptors are. So if a turbine is up high, which often is the case, it's possible that those shadows can cast even further, because it's up higher in the air. So we consider that in the analysis. And then the last thing that we consider on the next slide, this one, is our two different parameters. One, we call flicker relevance, so how far a shadow can go. It's probably intuitive to you that a shadow, much like if you're walking down the street and you look down at your shadow on the sidewalk, can only go so far. At some point, that light differential that creates the shadow starts to diffuse and that difference becomes imperceptible. The exact same thing happens here. We very conservatively assume that the rotor diameter, so blade tip to blade tip times 10, is how far these shadows are going. In the cases of these turbines, it's almost 1,200 meters, which is, let's call that somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 feet. That's a shadow being cast almost three quarters of a mile in that case, which, again, if you've ever looked at one, quite conservative in terms of how far it actually goes. But that's the industry standard, so that's what we use. And then we consider other environmental parameters, such as the angle of the sun above the horizon. When the sun very first rises in the morning and it's, say, a degree above the horizon, just barely noticeable, there's not enough light to cast a shadow. So we use three degrees, which is just a standard input within the model. Next slide. We take all of those inputs and we aggregate them and we come up with a result. And again, that's determined on every minute of every year and aggregated for all of the receptors. And we come up with results in both tabular format, table, and graphical format. In graphical format, it looks a lot like what you see on the screen, where it creates this very traditional butterfly shape. And the reason for that is when the sun rises in the morning in the east, it casts a shadow to the west. So during certain times of year, the sun rises more southeast, so it casts a shadow more northwest. And the same is true for other parts of the year as well. So that's why you get these cardinal directions, where the sun, the shadows get a little bit longer and the results get a little bit worse. The point is, the location of the receptor relative to the turbine matters a lot. Just because a home is close to a turbine doesn't necessarily mean the results are bad. It matters where it's at in terms of where the sun comes up and where the sun goes down. Next slide. We also get graphical results like this for every single receptor. So this is one example, just shows the first receptor at random. This shows along the bottom of that chart, you can see up there, every month of the year. And on the Y-axis, up and down, it shows the time of day. So you can see a small blue blob at the bottom there. And what that represents is for the turbine that's causing shadow at receptor one, there are, there is flicker being caused roughly from, let's call it, mid-May to mid-July, and roughly from 6:00 AM to 6:30 during most of those periods. So even if this were a home that were receiving 20 or 30 hours per year, you can see it's very isolated to a very specific time of day, a very predictable time of day and predictable time of year. It's not happening all the time. Next slide. Within the report that we prepared, that you guys can find in the binders, you can see the results for every single individual turbine and the exact amount of flicker that's being modeled. Aggregated, it looks a lot like this. So in the top table on the screen, if you consider the entire project, so both Bureau and Lee County, we considered all 110 of the turbines. There were 273 receptors. So I'll note, there's actually a typo in the deck you received where it says, actually, I fixed it on this one. If you have a printout that shows 73 in terms of number of receptors, that's 273. That's a typo by me. So there were 273 receptors considered within the project area. 82 of those had no flicker at all, and 42 across the entire project had 30 hours or more. If we isolate that to Lee County, 189 of those 273 receptors, so two-thirds-ish, are within Lee County. And 22 total receptors have shadow flicker above 30 hours per year, which, again, is not a mandated or regulated limit as much as a benchmark to present how we're doing. Next slide. So we know shadow flicker occurs. There are things that can be done to mitigate if it does happen. And again, I would emphasize that the results that we are projecting here, we believe, are highly conservative. And if anything, results are anticipated to be lower at most, if not all, of the receptors that we model. But if it does occur, these are just a sampling of some of the things that can happen to mitigate the amount of shadow happening. Simple ones like installing blinds and curtains for a landowner or putting awnings on their home to prevent the amount of flicker getting into their home. Planting trees or other types of vegetation is very common. Accounting for obstructions that are already there. Some of those things I mentioned, like hedgerows and barns, would, in many cases, cause the actual amount of flicker to be much lower than what's being modeled here. Or in a, in some situations, even regulating the operation of the turbine so that it operates less or at different times can cause that amount of flicker to go down. So those are all options on the table that are considered very much on a case-by-case basis. But the point is, it is manageable if there were an issue that couldn't be avoided. Excellent. I thank you all very much for your time and.
All right. Questions or further questions, Mr. Stryker?
Yes. Thank you, Judge. Mr. Anderson, thank you for your presentation. You mentioned to the board members that there was a report with regard to shadow flicker prepared as part of the application. Is that correct?
Yes.
And when you were referring to that report, were you referring to the special-use permit application that BSW Devco has filed here in Lee County?
That's correct.
And did you personally work on the preparations of that portion of the application that dealt with shadow flicker?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And would that portion of the application be Section 4.3.6?
Correct.
Okay. And in addition to the narrative in that section of the application, there was also a detailed report prepared?
Yes.
And would that report be found as part of Exhibit G to the application?
That's correct.
Okay. And what you've provided the board in your presentation is a summary of that report?
That's exactly right.
And could you further describe for the board what type of detailed analysis is within Exhibit G to the application?
Sure. So that report would go into detail, significant detail, and provide substantially more content in terms of results of what we provided here. The summation of what I just presented to you is identical. There are no differences at all. But it provides more detail on methodology approach and, again, receptor by receptor details of how much flicker is expected, where it's coming from, the turbines causing it, et cetera.
Okay. And that report was prepared under your direct supervision?
That's correct.
And I forgot to ask this earlier, Mr. Anderson, but you're a professional engineer, is that correct?
I am a professional engineer.
Are you licensed in any states as an engineer?
Yes, including the, I'm licensed as a PE, professional engineer, in the state of Illinois.
Okay. And do you have any, could you describe to the board what your relevant educational background is?
Sure. So I am a, I have undergraduate degrees in physics and mechanical engineering. I have my master's degree in engineering management.
And I think you mentioned you had a specific amount of, or a considerable amount of experience working with wind farm permit applications, is that correct?
Correct. I've been doing this majority of my career, about the last 15 years, focused primarily on wind farms and have worked on hundreds of wind farms across the country.
And within your focus on wind farms, have you specifically focused on shadow flicker?
Correct. That is one service area I've specialized in, yes.
Mr. Anderson, have you previously testified in any special use or conditional use permit hearings in Illinois?
Yes, many times.
Okay. And would those be with regard to shadow flicker reports? Similar to what we talked about tonight?
Exactly the same.
All right. I wanted to ask you a couple follow-up questions with regard to the inputs to the model that you use, the Wind Pro. As far as your terrain data, you indicated that the source for that was USGS NED, is that correct?
Correct.
And could you describe for the board, I assume that's United States Geological Survey?
Correct. So that data comes from the United States Geological Survey, and NED stands for National Elevation Data Set. So it's a collection of publicly available data across the country.
Okay. And that would be data that's typically relied upon by a person in your position performing a shadow flicker study? You also use the term greenhouse as part of your presentation, is that correct?
Correct.
And am I correct that to summarize, the greenhouse position would be to assume every receptor is contained in a sunny day with no features beyond terrain, such as barns or anything else blocking potential shadow flicker to the receptor?
Greenhouse specifically means that every home, every receptor is modeled as a glass box, rather than something having a roof or very concrete or very discreet, specific windows, things like that. It's a glass box on all sides. But you're also correct that we did not consider any sort of other obstacles, trees, buildings, et cetera.
Okay. So I hate to use the term worst case, but it would be the most conservative approach, because this receptor would have no shade or fog or anything else impacting the potential flicker.
Correct. Results could only get better.
And you would expect results in the real world to be better, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Judge. That completes my direct exam.
Very good. How about you, Mr. Boonstra?
No, Judge, thank you.
Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forster?
I have one question. On your modeling parameters, you call something sunshine probability. Is that based on a percentage of cloudy days versus sunny days, or what is that based on?
Good question. And shame on me for skipping over that in the presentation. That was unintentional. Sunshine probability is another input to the model, where historical weather data for the last 30 or more years is aggregated at different points throughout the country. And this was from, I would have to check the report at a nearby weather station. And it considers all of the cloudy versus sunny days historically. And those follow that curve that you can see within the report. So in the month of January, it says there are this many sunny days, and the month of February, that many sunny days, and so on. So we consider that within the model, because assuming every single day would be sunny is, of course, unrealistic. So we take weather data from nearby and model it in that way.
Correct. And does that, has that modeling changed over time? Say, over a number of years? I'm asking climate change. Does that have anything to do with that?
It, it's possible. I would suggest that it is probably more likely that, because this is aggregated over such a great period of time, that the relative recency of that impact would probably not substantively change this. And even if it did, I wouldn't expect it to be more than a negligible difference in percentages.
Thank you.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, just one point of interest. You talked about several factors as being industry-type standards or this type of thing. How many companies roughly, similar to yours, that do this type of work? Are there in the United States, just roughly?
Dozens.
Okay, there's quite a few then. Okay. When you mentioned those numbers, I kind of wondered, you know, how common that was. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bothy? Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, just a couple things. So this is the third time you've run this study on this project, correct?
That is correct.
So in my notes, I've got, when you ran it back in 19, you came up with, I think, 16.
Correct. In Lee County, yes.
And then.
16, let's expand that.
16 over 30 hours of shadow.
I agree.
And 2020, second time, you had 26 residents above 30 hours. And the meters were 100, the blades were 116 meters. Now they're 120, and you have less. How is that possible?
It depends entirely on where the turbines are at and how many of them are being considered. In terms of methodology and inputs, other than the turbine model and the turbine locations, everything else has been quite literally identical from one study to the next, in terms of all of the parameters. We talked about where the receptors are, how they're considered, et cetera. So the difference is going to be entirely from which turbine positions we're considering. So if we consider this one, point A currently, and in the future, or in a past one, we considered point B, the results could change. So it's entirely driven by where the, what turbines are at.
So the inputs into your computer model are identical to the previous two run?
Completely identical.
Oh, the other question, you said you modeled 273 homes in Lee County. 22 over 30 hours, 14 had none. So that leaves 153 that will receive some shadow flicker.
We can, one minor correction. We considered 273 cumulative across both counties, 189 in Lee County. So 189, there were 14 that had none. So that would leave, 189 minus 14 would be 175 that would have some. And if you take 175 minus 22, 153 had some level below 30. Yes.
So there's no recourse or no ability for them residents to do anything?
There are currently no plans to mitigate any of those, correct?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, just a few questions. Several times you mentioned every year. What timeframe did you, are you referring to when you said we measured every minute of every year?
That's a good question. Every year, the term every year is probably not a fair representation. It takes every minute of a year, and it's not specific to any given year, because we tell it how often the sun is shining. We tell it, we provide wind data over the course of the year, that when we select the wind data, for example, we look at multiple years from the site and we pick the worst case, so that with the highest wind speed, so that the turbines operate the most. There is no difference within the model in terms of, and these are arbitrary numbers, 2018 versus 2019 versus 2002. It is just a year with every single one. It is just a year with every single one of the minutes modeled within that given year.
Okay, thank you. You actually alluded to another question I had. Does the speed of the turbine affect that flicker?
As in the speed that it's rotating?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure, in a very negligible way, it can affect the amount of flicker that's occurring, and by negligible, I mean after the decimal point. The, the more substantive impact is simply that the turbine is rotating. So for example, most turbines rotate between roughly ten and twenty RPMs. The difference, if we allow a turbine to operate at ten RPMs for the entire year, and then we did it with the turbine operating at twenty RPMs the entire year, there would be a very small difference just because the sun continues moving during that time, so you would see some very small deltas. But the results, for all intents and purposes, would be identical because it's still operating during that time.
Okay, and then one final thing. Of the twenty-two who have shadow flicker over thirty hours, how many of those are participating residents?
Nine.
Nine, okay, thank you.
All right, questions? Hey, any follow-up, Mr. Sturgard?
No, Judge.
You missed him down, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, if I could get the original exhibit back for me, thank you. Judge, we're ready to present our second witness.
Okay, let's do it. The words of Gary Gilmore?
I'd like to call Dennis Jimeno, please. And, oh, okay, he will be testifying via Zoom virtually.
Trying to crane my neck.
All right.
Mr. Jimeno, you want to raise your right hand for me, please, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, old truth, and nothing but the truth? Did you test, just say test a few times?
Test, test, test. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Great.
Ready to go?
Yep. Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen.
Whoa, 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 just let's, let's answer questions at the beginning at least.
Let me, let me get us started here. Dennis, Mr. Jimeno, if you could, please state your name and spell it for the record.
Sure, my name is Dennis Jimeno, D-E-N-N-I-S-J-I-M-E-N-O.
Okay, and sir, what's your current business address?
My current business address is one nine seven zero zero, Genelia Farm Boulevard, Ashburn, Virginia, two zero one four seven.
Okay, and by whom are you currently employed?
ComSearch.
And what is your current position?
I am a telecommunications engineer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand, something engineer?
Telecommunications.
Sorry, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, and sir, if you could please describe for the board members what your relevant educational background is?
Sure, I have a master's of science in electrical engineering from George Washington University, and I also have a bachelor of science in electrical engineering from Virginia Tech. And, yeah.
Okay, very good. And sir, as you know, we're here to talk about the petition for special use to repower the Big Sky Wind Farm filed by the applicant, BSW Devco. Are you familiar with that application, sir?
I am.
Okay, and did you perform any studies or have any input to that application?
Yes.
Okay, and could you describe for the board members what your input was into the application? What, what types of activities did you work on?
Um, so, well, I basically supervised the studies and reviewed them. And is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and then these are the type of studies that you'll be talking about as your testimony goes forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and sir, I know you've brought a presentation to provide to the board this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I've handed out a copy of the PowerPoint to all the folks that are present here in the room. And there's also one that's going to be put up virtually to allow participants who are linking into this hearing over the web to view it. But I'm going to mark that presentation as petitioner's exhibit seventeen, and we're going to put that up on the web so folks can follow along with you as you're presenting.
Sure, would you, would you mind putting it on the, the slide view, not, not this view, but the other view? So, so instead of seeing the, the notes on the right, you just see the, the slides?
No, I, I want to be able to watch you testify, sir, and we, we don't have any spectators on Zoom, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so Dennis, at this point, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to you with one more question. The presentation you're giving here this evening, was that personally prepared by you?
Yes.
All right, thank you, if you could, please take, take the board members through your presentation.
Okay, sure, so good evening, everyone, again, my name is Dennis Jimeno, and I'm gonna present the telecommunications impact results for the Big Sky Wind Repower Project. So, next slide, please. So again, I work for ComSearch, and ComSearch is, is just a little, just a little bit about the company. We're, we, we've been around for over forty years, it was established in nineteen seventy-seven. And we're, we're part of a larger company called ComScope. And, and we specialize in spectrum management and wireless engineering services. And so some of the services that we provide include microwave link design, we do frequency coordination, RF or radio frequency planning, interference analysis. And so we basically help our clients to, to more efficiently utilize the, the frequency spectrum. And we also maintain a database that contains information on all the licensed telecom networks throughout the country. We use that in conjunction with the FCC database when we, when we perform these studies. So, next slide. Again, a little bit about myself, we talked about this already. I have a master's in electrical engineering from George Washington University and a bachelor's in electrical engineering as well, from Virginia Tech. I've been in the industry for over twenty-five years. Most of my experience have been in, in radio frequency planning for various wireless telecommunications networks for air, land, and sea applications. I've also done microwave path engineering, and of course, I've done interference studies to assess the impact of wind energy facilities on various telecommunications systems, including microwave, mobile phone, broadcast radio, radar, and land mobile. So, next slide. So tonight, I'm gonna go over the results of five telecommunications studies that we did for the Big Sky Wind Project, starting with microwave, and then followed by AM/FM broadcast radio. We also did a study for land mobile and emergency services, mobile phone, and over-the-air broadcast TV. And we updated these, by the way, just, this past March. Next slide. Okay, so for the microwave paths, if the, over, over on the left, what, what you see here is the, is the, the project area for the, for the Big Sky Wind Project. And those lines that, that intersect represent the various microwave paths that we identified. We identified a total of fourteen microwaves links within this project area. And the way we analyze these links is we, we, we calculate what's known as a Fresnel zone. Basically what it is, it's a, if you can visualize a three-dimensional ellipsoid, ellipsoid along those lines. And so in order to prevent or avoid any interference to these microwave paths, you want to make sure that there are no obstructions that cross these, these Fresnel zones. And so, so we identified these fourteen paths, and we also took into consideration the, the the wind turbines, a total of one hundred and eleven wind turbines with dimensions of eighty-four point five meters hub height and one hundred and twenty or one hundred and ten meter blade diameter. Based on these dimensions and the locations of these wind turbines, we didn't find any of them to obstruct the Fresnel zones. Next slide, please. So the, the other system that we analyzed are the AM and FM broadcast radio. So for, for these systems, unlike microwave paths, they don't require line of sight necessarily between the two points. These are known as broadcast radios, so they cover a wide area. And so, over on the left is a map of, of again, the Big Sky Wind Project area. And the, the red dots represent the AM stations around the project area. And we identified a total of five within thirty kilometers of the project. And then on the right, you have the FM radio stations that we identified around the radio, the, the wind project. And we, we found a total of ten within thirty kilometers. And so to, to analyze these broadcast radio systems, what we do is we take a look, we, we define what's called an exclusion zone. And so any, any, any object, especially large metal objects that are in this exclusion zone, could potentially distort the broadcast pattern of the, the, the radio stations. And so for AM, and, and these exclusion zones are a function of the type of antenna. So for AM, if you have a directional antenna, the exclusion zone is basically the lesser of ten wavelengths or three kilometers. A wavelength is, is defined as the, 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 the speed of light divided by the frequency of the, the signal. And then if it's a non-directional antenna, the exclusion zone is, is equivalent to one wavelength. And so, these are, again, the, the, the biggest, or the longest distance is three kilometers. And the, the, the closest AM station that we found is twenty point nine three kilometers, so it's, it's well beyond the exclusion zone. Similarly, for FM, we calculated the exclusion zone based on basically, based on the, the, the near field of the antenna. So then, that, that near field is, we define it based on a formula of two, two D squared divided by the wavelength, D being the, the largest dimension of the antenna. And usually, these are in the order of meters, and the nearest FM station that we identified is, is over fourteen kilometers away. So, so neither of these stations, AM or FM, are within the exclusion zones. And so we don't, we don't anticipate there being any issues with the, the wind farm. Next slide, please. Next system is the land mobile and emergency services. So here, we evaluated the registered frequencies for first responders, including police, fire, and emergency medical services. We also identified all business and industrial land mobile radio and commercial E nine one one systems. And, and, and the, the table that you see there on the right are twenty-seven site-based licenses within the project area. And you can see that on the map represented by the red dots. And in addition to these, you also, we also found area-based licenses that are scattered throughout the, the county and the state. And, and there are hundreds of these throughout, throughout the entire state. And so, but what these, what all of these systems have in common is that these are designed to operate reliably using two-way communications in a non-line-of-sight environment. And so that's made possible using the frequencies that they operate on. And typically, they, they have multiple base stations that serve their, their users. And so, and so you have a system that can operate in the presence of, of wind turbines or, or buildings. And so, so we don't anticipate there being an issue with these systems as well. Next slide. Mobile phone is the next system that we analyzed. And these work the same way, they, they operate reliably in a non-line-of-sight environment. And we identified all the usual, you know, the common providers that, that this AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobiles of the world. And you can see that in the table on the right. They serve clients throughout Lee and Bureau County. And again, these systems all operate in a non-line-of-sight environment, and so we don't, we don't expect there to be any issues with, with respect to the wind turbines. Next slide, please. And the, the last system that we took a look at involved over-the-air or OTA broadcast TV. And this, this, this slide here is just to make a distinction between OTA or over-the-air broadcast TV and satellite. What we, what we analyze here are the, the, the system on the left. Satellite TV was not considered because those, those systems point to satellites in outer space, and so there shouldn't be any problem with, with those systems. So, next slide, please. So for over-the-air broadcast TV, we, we identified, within a hundred and fifty kilometers, we identified sixty-five stations that are currently licensed. And of these fourteen, fourteen are with, are, they have coverage contours that intersect the, the, the Big Sky Project area. And then there are, in addition to that, there are two low-power digital stations as well. So a total of sixteen have their coverage intersecting the, the project area. And what, what, what we've, what we've found with, with regard to OTA TVs is that they have been known to experience interference due to wind turbines, due to signal scattering, basically that involves the signals bouncing off the blades. But with the, with the, with the advent of digital signal technology, the effects have been significantly reduced compared to when we had the analog signals. They would have experienced much, much more severe effects due to the wind turbines. But with digital technology, the, the digital receivers that, that are in use today have undergone significant improvements to mitigate the effects of, of signal scattering. And furthermore, my understanding is that these wind turbines already exist, and therefore, you know, there should not be any interference that was not already there. But nevertheless, I was, I was told that Blue Sky will, will implement a complaint resolution process in the event that users experience some level of interference with, due to the, the wind turbines. And Think that's it.
Hello, Mr. Stricker.
Yes, Judge, thank you. Dennis, in in follow-up to some of the points you were just making, is it fair to say that. Based on the results of the study you conducted, you do not anticipate the wind, the repowering. Will cause any broadcast TV interference, is that correct?
No new interference. We don't know if we don't know if there's gonna, there's already interference. There but because the. These these wind turbines already exist and so because they already exist, then. This repowering would not introduce any new interference that was already present.
Okay, so i- if an individual is experiencing television signal interference either from the existing turbines or from the. Repowered turbines, are there any mitigation steps that can be taken to?
Yes.
You describe what those steps are.
So typically what we recommend is, first of all, if 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 there is an antenna. Indoors to to replace that with an outdoor antenna, preferably pointing, you know, towards the. The 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 TV station. And and when you when you combine that with with the. With the. You know, with the digital receiver. Normally. That that would mitigate the interference if if that still. Results in interference, another possibility would be to upgrade the the TV itself.
Okay, and could cable television also be a mitigation technique?
Yes, so cable TV as well as satellite TV should not have any. Should not be impacted by the wind farm.
Okay, I I I think you mentioned, sir, that there would be a complaint resolution process put in place, is that correct? That was your understanding?
Correct.
Okay, so if an individual did submit a complaint with regard to television interference. What what steps could be taken to figure out if if there was a problem with the reception? And I take it the the mitigation techniques that you just mentioned could be employed if it if it was determined that the. Either the existing turbine or the repowering was causing the problem. As in, what I'm getting at is, is there a way to eliminate either the turbines or something else causing a signal interference problem? Or if it was television, would you just presume that it was probably the turbines causing the problem?
I mean, it could be something else, it doesn't necessarily have to be. The wind turbine, I mean, signals can bounce off any.
Okay, such such as a barn or a silo?
Correct.
Okay, but all the mitigation techniques you just mentioned would be equally applicable, no matter how that signal was being interfered with, correct? With regard to television?
Correct.
And. Sir, I wanted to ask you a couple follow-up questions. I I I believe you mentioned all the reports that you prepared in support of this application were updated in March, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and. With regard to Lee County specifically, do you know how many turbine locations you studied as part of the March update?
One hundred and eleven.
Turbine locations? Okay, I I think that would be for the entire project, is that correct? What I wanted to know, specific to Lee County.
We're talking on top of each other, so.
Let me withdraw the question, restate it. Mr. Hamino, I I think you mentioned that you studied one hundred and eleven turbine locations as part of your reports for this project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and of those one hundred and eleven locations, do you know how many you studied in Lee County?
I believe. I don't I I don't remember the exact number, but I do know that the one hundred and eleven. Include included all of the wind turbines in Lee as well as Bureau County.
Okay, so you studied all fifty-eight turbine locations in Lee, presumably?
That is correct, yes.
And I I wanted to ask you one follow-up question with regard to your microwave study. I I think you mentioned, and it's in one of your PowerPoint slides, that the current proposed turbine locations. Do not encroach any of the microwave exclusion zones, is that correct?
Do not encroach any of the Fennel zones, that's correct.
Okay, and does that lead you to conclude that the repowering will likely not. Cause any signal interference issues with regard to microwave systems?
That's correct.
And sir, with regard to the results of your AM and FM broadcast radio survey. I think you you mentioned in the bottom of your slide that com search had no recommend recommendations or mitigation techniques. That it would suggest or require for this project, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And and that would lead you to believe that the the repowering would not cause any AM or FM broadcast radio interference?
That's correct.
All right. And then lastly, to summarize the results of your land and mobile emergency services study. Is it fair to say in summary that based on your study, you would not anticipate the repowering would cause any issues with. Land, mobile and emergency services communications?
That is correct.
And lastly, I I guess I said last before, but I mean it this time, with regard to mobile phone communications. Am I correct to state that the results of your study would indicate that you do not anticipate. Any issues with mobile phone communications as a result of the repowering?
Correct.
Thank you, Judge, that completes my direct examination.
Boonstra, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Forster.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Bothy, Mr. Pratt. Mr. Hughes.
No questions.
And Mr. Meyer.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hamino, you may. Disappear, step down, disappear, go away. Thank you.
Judge, if I could, if I could ask for a short break while I just compile my exhibits?
Absolutely. Let's take ten, I think it's. It's almost exactly seven o'clock, let's make it seven-ten.
Judge, at this point, the applicant will rest its case.
Oh, sorry. Judge, I'm happy to report at this point, the applicant will rest its case.
And Alice, still no one on Zoom? And gentleman in the salmon shirt, you're representative of, right, of the petitioner. So there are no other parties to present any evidence unless you did want it to, Ms. Duffin?
If I may, before evidence closes, judge, just formally move to.
Okay, and they're all admitted.
Okay, thank you.
All your exhibits, one through seventeen.
Correct.
And if you're ready.
I am.
Closing argument.
Okay. Thanks to all of you again for bearing with us throughout this process. I hope that, given how much time we've been able to spend together, a little bit in 2020, but a lot in 2021, that you've realized, one, how much commitment there is from the current ownership to follow through and complete this repowering. And, you know, I, like you, come from an economic development background, and it's amazing how long you have to stick with certain projects and stick through it to get, hopefully, the gains for the community that you're hoping for. And I know all of you are here, first and foremost, to protect community members and do what's best for the residents of Lee County. And I really hope that, as you've sat here and learned about our plans and the project, that you believe, as we do, that this repowering truly is in the best interests of the Lee County residents. As I said in my opening, and I truly believe it, this is one of those rare projects where I think the benefits really, really do far, far outweigh the drawbacks, which, in this case, given the fact that we're talking about modernizing a ten-year-old project, really, I think the drawbacks are limited to, you know, a little bit of extra traffic and construction congestion on the roads. We have, and this is a new update, but some of you might be aware, the county board did approve the road use agreement that we have negotiated with Dave Anderson, the Lee County Highway Engineer. It is the plan, I cannot state it as fact yet, but that the townships, whose roads we would also be on, in both Lee and Bureau County, would sign a very similar agreement to the, what I'll call, the master road use agreement that we have entered into with the county. So, once you take out what are, hopefully, temporary construction impacts, and, you know, those impacts would really primarily be limited to our landowners, that this project is going to have a significant benefit for Lee County as a whole. And I think that would primarily be through increased economic activity related to the repowering, but also, Lee County would be a taxing district that I think would benefit greatly from the increased tax revenue that repowering would bring. And those increased tax benefits would be, of course, proportional across all of the taxing districts, with the schools being the primary beneficiaries, which, of course, Lee County residents would go to those schools and benefit from that. So certainly, the increased economic activity, I think, is a great betterment to Lee County. But also, when we're talking a little more closer into the project, we will be taking ten-year-old turbines and replacing those with Tier One models that will be more efficient, and I think probably, for your purposes, quieter at low speeds, low wind speeds, which will really be of a great benefit to those folks that are in the immediate neighborhood of the turbines. Also, you know, we've had a lot of opportunity to talk about shadow flicker here in 2021. And one thing that hasn't come out, but, you know, the project currently, right now, does not, given its age, does not have any shadow flicker limitations placed upon it. As part of this repowering, we have offered to come to what you heard Mr. Anderson talk about as the industry standard of limiting our shadow flicker to no more than thirty hours per year per receptor. I think that, in and of itself, will be a great benefit to the residents of Lee County that are in and around the wind farm, because, one, it gives them a concrete limit that they can peg against us, and secondly, given how we can model and somewhat predict shadow flicker, we can also work with them, if there is a problem, to not only limit the flicker, but to look at mitigative actions to further reduce the impacts of shadow flicker upon the project. So I think placing those limitations upon the project is really another great benefit for Lee County residents. And, you know, certainly, I'd be remiss to not address that, since this is the third time that we've been before each other and talking about this project, one thing that I really, I know you're concerned about is expending a considerable amount of the county's time and your personal time and resources for a project, you know, that might be somewhat speculative and perhaps isn't going to happen, because we've all spent a lot of time in those cases. As you know, we've been at this since 2018, but I really hope that through both Mike Speerschneider's testimony, and perhaps even more specifically Andrew DePass, who was the direct owner representative, that you got a feel for, one, the absolute commitment to this repowering. I think you heard from Andrew that this project was the major utility scale wind asset in its portfolio, and that successfully completing this repowering was VTOL's number-one priority with regard to its renewable holdings. So, one, hopefully, that emphasizes the commitment to this repowering. Secondly, you also heard from Mr. DePass that VTOL has a very significant balance sheet, strong enough to finance this project off that balance sheet, which means it's not contingent upon any third-party financing, which, you know, given the vagaries of the economy, can at times be hard to come by, and that's not a contingency that we have to worry about here. Also, you've probably heard from a number of energy projects, whether it's renewable or not, that need to get their siting or special use permitting approval here in Lee County, but whether or not the project goes forward may be contingent upon securing a revenue source for the project, whether it's a PPA, a renewable energy credit agreement or otherwise. And you heard really specifically from Mike Speerschneider, talk about this project right now does not have a PPA, it's selling power directly into the market, okay? And you heard from Mr. DePass that while they may be seeking a PPA, it would be merely to even out the highs and lows of the power pricing, and it would not, whether or not the project actually secures a PPA, the financing is not dependent upon that. Right now, the project is built and operating and selling power into the market at the market price, and that's working for them. So at a minimum, they will be able to continue with that. So VTOL not only has the ability to finance this, but also, we are not looking at a project or a repowering that's contingent upon a third party being willing to buy the power at a price that's high enough to sustain the project. You know, that's a huge contingency that has been not a consideration here. So hopefully, when you combine the absolute passion for this project, the passion to be here in Lee County, the ability to finance it, and the ability, or not having to be concerned about market forces with regard to offtake, you know, being a trigger for this repowering, we really have a project that makes a lot of sense, and a project where the table is absolutely set, where the granting of this permit is not merely a step to get to the end, but it is one of the final steps before we get to the end. So hopefully, that eases, at least in your mind, some of the burden of having to spend so much time on this, is that we are working towards something that's going to happen. And we're really happy to be in the unique situation to be talking about that. And, you know, one of the things that the ZBA is tasked with is, here in Lee County, looking at not only the standard special use permitting criteria when you're evaluating one of these applications, but also the Lee County Wind Energy Conversion System Ordinance criteria. And it's interesting, when you look at the standard SUP criteria in relation to a repowering project, I think, you know, it's almost a no-brainer. But I wanted to circle back to those criterias as I talked to you this evening, because I think, when you think back to the testimony of the folks you heard from, again, Mike Speerschneider, the project developer, Andre DePass, the project owner, Chris Howell with regard to sound engineering, Terry Vandewall with regard to the ecology and the protections that this project plans to put forward for the environment, and Aaron Anderson tonight with regard to shadow flicker, along with Dennis Amino, it really helps crystallize what we're talking about and how easily it fits in, hopefully, to the task that's before the ZBA. So, you know, the first SUP criteria that you all are tasked with considering is determining whether or not the application or the applicant in the project that the applicant's presenting will have any adverse impacts on the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. You know, in this case, we're talking about a repowering, so we have a neighborhood that's not only been living in and around the project for over a decade, but we're in an area here on the Lee and Bureau County border that has a lot of significant wind development, including a project, and I was surprised when you go visit Ohio, Illinois, and you see how closely intermixed the Green River Project is with Big Sky, that this is certainly an area where the residents in and around Ohio are very familiar with wind projects. And certainly, the repowering in and of itself, I do not believe would have any adverse impact on the neighborhood at all, and for the reasons I stated previously, we very much believe it'll be a betterment. And issue, SUP criteria two is, again, fairly similar to one, which is no impact on the surrounding properties. Again, you know, we're going to have quieter turbines, shadow flicker restrictions, limited and limited construction activity. So for a project that's going to bring this many benefits, I really think the impact on the surrounding communities is very minimal. SUP criteria three is that there be no adverse impact on traffic conditions. And as I mentioned, we've just entered into a very detailed, I think it's a forty-eight-page road use agreement with Lee County, and there certainly will be some impact to traffic in and around Ohio as the project repowering, you know, the construction activities are taking place. But once those limited activities have completed, really, the O and M operations and maintenance activities in the area is not going to be any higher than it is now. So I think that the, any adverse impact on local traffic conditions is, one, very minimal, two, for a defined period of time, and three, certainly worthy, I think, for the residents to go through, to have the significant impacts from the repowering that I believe that they'll see. SUP criteria four is that there be no impact on public utilities. And of course, what's interesting here with this repowering is, we really don't use any public utilities at all. There's probably a restroom in the operation and maintenance building, but that's it. We're not a water user, we don't utilize a lot of power, gas, et cetera. And again, with our increase in property tax, hopefully, that's going to taxing districts such as fire protection or otherwise, that while they might not be directly utilities, they're utility-like and really help the region maintain its infrastructure. So I think we're going to be actually a betterment with regard to that category. SUP criteria five is regional environmental considerations. You know, we have a ten-year-old project, and certainly, one of the witnesses, I always look forward to hearing his testimony, is Terry Vandewall. But again, I hope that he left you all with the feeling that we take the regional environment and the ecology of the area very seriously. We know that there's two sensitive species here with regard to the Blandings turtle and the ornate box turtle. I think I mentioned to some of you, you know, just in passing, that Chicago Tribune had run a front-page story on endangered species in Illinois, and then the first two things it highlighted were the Blandings and box turtle, and focused on Lee County here. So that obviously caught my attention, and that's one of the things Terry and I talked about, and it really reinforced for me how important the protections that Terry had recommending and the implementation of those, which we will do, are towards making sure we have a successful repowering that more than adequately takes into account regional environmental considerations. So, you know, outside of the environmental ecological protections, whether it's bats, birds, turtles, or otherwise, again, I have always considered sound to be an important part of the environment, and with the quieter turbines, I think that we're going to be improving the environment over and above what it is now. And, you know, on top of the regional environmental considerations, I think you also hopefully left with a good feeling for how important we take safety during both the construction and operational phases of this project, and the types of protections that will be put in place to protect the folks that we bring on site to work on the project, but most importantly, the regional residents that live in and around the project. So when you look at those five SUP criteria, you see just how nicely I think the repowering fits into those. And one of the things that we spent a lot of time on with Mike Speerschneider in his testimony, is going through how we believe the repowering fits with all the wind-specific criteria that Lee County has put into place. I don't want to bore you or go through all those criteria again, because I think they're adequately within Mike's testimony. But one of the things that I did want to highlight was the two variance requests that we had made. One is fairly simple and straightforward, that your ordinance has a standard one-year time limitation to begin construction. We've talked about this recently, but we would again ask that, for the purposes of repowering, that be extended to three years. We're not anticipating being able to meet anywhere near that time, and I think from what you heard from Mike Speerschneider and Andre DePass, the plan would be to start the repowering as soon as possible after securing of the appropriate permits from both Lee and Bureau, if they're awarded. But again, that is just something we've found in the past to be helpful, to have a little more flexibility built in, so that if there are delays, which do arise, we're not in a position of having to come back before the board at eventuality. But most importantly, we've asked for eleven setback variances in the application, and the maps with regard to those variances are in Exhibit E, and there's a narrative section in the application, 4.2.9, that refers specifically to the variances that are requested. And our request here for those variances is the same as we made in 2019, which is considering the difficulties, hardships, and the harmonious purpose and interest. There are some locations, and this is really, again, due to the unique circumstance we have with repowering, where, as you've heard from a number of witnesses, clearly, we want to be able to reuse the existing foundations and the existing towers, given the age of the project and updates with the ordinance. We do have a number of turbines that are within three hundred and fifty feet of a property line, which is a technical issue with the current ordinance, and this is what's led us to make these variance requests. And these are turbines fifty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-three, ninety-eight, one oh six, one fourteen, and one twenty. And I do want to emphasize what's written in the application is that we would be very comfortable that if those variances were granted, that they be conditioned upon us. us submitting a waiver, showing the landowner awareness of the issue and consent to the turbine being repowered within three hundred and fifty feet of his or her property line, and that we would, um, submit those waivers to, in a sense, perfect the variation, uh, to the zoning administrator prior to any building permit being issued with respect to the turbines I just named. So hopefully, uh, you see this as we do, of a very fair solution to allow the reuse of, of the existing foundations and towers, uh, while still maintaining compliance with the ordinance, and that compliance would be maintained, in this case, uh, through the variance process. As you know, the requirements for variance really require that you talk about applicable hardship, uh, which I think Mike went into in some detail in his testimony, but, um, also, you know, that it be something that's not of the current owner's making, and, as you know, VTOL just came in and purchased this project, and again, we didn't have any specific control over where the turbine locations are originally, and we think it's a great thing to repower those, and, and we would need the, the variations in these instances to go do that. So, uh, hopefully, you see it the way we do, that the legal requirements for a variation have been met through the statements in the application, as well as, uh, the testimony of the witnesses. And again, these variations, if granted, are going to allow us to not only repower the project, but in the process of doing so, greatly reduce the burden that would be on the property and the landowners of having to do s- s- you know, really extensive civil work to either dig up the existing foundation and/or to prepare a new one, along with the congestion noise, um, and all of the other issues that come along with the prolonged, uh, construction activity on the, on the general residents of the region. So, um, that is why we have specifically requested those variations. But I wanted to, um, really close my comments and my client's comments in, in a similar manner to how we opened those, which is, uh, we really appreciate Lee County, uh, we want to be a long-term resident here, we think it's a great place to invest, we think it's a great place to live and to operate this project. We wouldn't be here if we weren't serious about it, and also, we know we wouldn't be here without the time and effort that has been personally expended by all of you to take time out of your personal schedules to essentially volunteer to be here, uh, to protect the best interests of Lee County residents. And certainly, we wouldn't be here without the exceptional support we get from the Lee County staff, Dee and Alice in her office, as well as the State's Attorney's Office, Charlie Boonstra, Judge Slavin, and Callie. So, uh, we really appreciate the joint efforts of, of all involved to get us at least to this step. And also, again, I want to thank for anybody that's listening on, on Zoom, um, that this project is meant to be open and for public participation, and, uh, for those interested parties out there, uh, I want to thank you for your participation, because, um, you, you're a major part of, of what everybody's doing here. So again, thank you very much, thank you for your time, and, uh, I know it's certainly my clients wish that we, we bring a great project here, uh, to Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alice, still no one on Zoom? All right. Well, now would be the opportunity for interested parties to give any public comment, closing statement, but we have none. So, we will close this stage of the proceedings. The next step is obviously fact-finding and recommendation. We sort of talked a little bit about it off the record, but, um, just to make sure, uh, the next schedule, where the next available dates, as I try and remember to call them, are Ju- are Monday, June twenty-first, and Tuesday, June twenty-second. Am I correct? That. Mr. Burrow, you can be there on, can't be there on the Monday, but can on the Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bothy, you can be there both day. Mr. Hughes, you cannot be there either day. Mr. Forster, you cannot be there either day.
Correct.
Brett, you can be there both of those days. And Mr. Meyer, you can be there both of those days.
Correct.
Okay. Well, we have quorum on each of the days, and I see no reason not to forge ahead, so I will recess this until, I'm not sure we'll need both nights, and we'll just have to see how it, how it plays out. So I'll see you, uh, recess until Monday, June twenty-first at six o'clock. For those of you not joining us that night, I guess that's just Craig, we'll see you on, well, you'll have to know if we're going to recess until Tuesday night at six. I guess you'll have to get, get some info, get some inside info. Okay. Everybody have a good rest of the week?
It'll be six PM, Judge?
Yes, six PM. I, I thought I said that, but yeah.
I'm sure you did.
No, it's okay. I don't know if I did or not. Okay. Everybody have a good rest of the week?